I will call to order the meeting of the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission for Monday, April 26, 2021, and read a short message pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number 16 and subsequent orders regarding public meetings and social distancing and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The Planning Commission meeting will be held by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. We will hold a vote, members of the Commission, a vote to hold this meeting electronically, and we'll also let that serve as our roll call vote. So when your name is called, please respond with "present" and approve if you approve of holding the meeting by electronic means. Mary Ann, take the roll call vote, please.
Chair Perrier.
Present and approved.
Vice Chair Harris.
Present and approve.
Mr. Wilson.
Present and approve.
Councilwoman Love. Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler.
Present and approve.
Ms. Hibbler.
Present and approve.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We'll start with the invocation. Albert, would you do the honor of leading us in prayer?
Father, again, we bow before you thanking you for this opportunity, for watching over us, keeping us from our last meeting until present. We thank you for watching over our community and our citizens. Now, Master, we ask you to direct us that we do things for the betterment of our community, that you get all honor, glory, and praise. We asked it all in Christ's name and for His sake. Amen.
Thank you, Albert. Mr. Wilson, you have a flag present behind you. Would you do the honor of leading us in the pledge? And I encourage everyone, please, join Mr. Wilson in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which is saying, "One nation, under God," with the visual justice.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. A couple of things I just want to bring to everyone's attention tonight. I'm sorry that Dr. Organe hasn't joined us quite yet, but as you all know, the Gallatin Municipal and Regional Planning Commission is being dissolved and reformed as just the Municipal Planning Commission. So tonight is Dr. Organe's last meeting with us. He has served on this board for, well, for longer than I have. So it has to be 15 years. He was on it before I was on it. He took a brief break for a while and then rejoined and served many years. And he's always been a proponent of high-quality standards and architecture and very concerned about aesthetics. And I've always really valued his opinion. And he's been a great member of this board. I wish he was on here. When he does join, y'all, I'll mention something to him afterwards. Thank him for his service for many years on this board. We'll miss him. The other sad news is that we're losing one of our valuable staff members, Dustin Shane, who has been with us. Dustin, if you're on there, I think you joined us two years ago, or has it even been longer than that? Time flies.
It's been almost exactly two years, yeah.
Two years. And Dustin has been an absolute pleasure to work with and a real asset in our department. But Kent Fulton, talent is grabbed up by others, and he has an opportunity he needs to pursue. Dustin, do you want to say a few things?
Yeah, just, I mean, it's been an absolute pleasure working here at Gallatin. I think the city's got a lot going for it. I mean, especially the people, everybody I work with at City Hall, everybody here on the Planning Commission, and just wonderful town with friendly people and true grit and grace. So it's just been a great, great honor. I have very fond memories.
Well, Dustin, we wish you the best. And I hope everything works out great. If it doesn't, please leave a trail of breadcrumbs so you know your way back. All right?
All right. It's nice to have a safety net, I guess.
Thanks. Mr. Secretary, do you have prior minutes to submit for approval?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I got minutes stated March 8th and March 22nd. I move we approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Wilson to approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Stroudler. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you please take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval of the minutes indicated by saying aye?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Tonight, before I open the public comment on the consent agenda items and anything else, I just want to remind everyone that we hope to return to in-person meetings starting in May. That's our intent. There's Dr. Organe. Dr. Organe, you missed. Your ears should be burning. We're all thanking you for many years of valuable service to this commission. Do you have any words you'd like to say?
All things come to an end. I've enjoyed my time with you, all of you. You're very professional. You've got the right attitude. The staff is great. They're very professional. They're hardworking. They don't get nearly enough recognition. They don't get nearly enough support. And it's a really tough job for them. And you've done a great job. I mean, all three of you officers have done a great job managing the meetings. And yeah, it's been a pleasure. But I guess, I don't know how long Walmart's been in town, but I'd say at least 20 years. So I've been involved most of that time. There was a period of time that I was removed from the Planning Commission for being outspoken and later was put back on it. And didn't change my behavior, but yeah, I've enjoyed it, but it's time to let somebody else do it.
Well, Dr. Organe, you've left your mark on the community in a very positive way. Thank you.
You're gonna miss me on occasion, but not very often, but you will miss me on occasion.
I will. I will. So tonight, for the, I was just mentioning that we do plan to return to in-person meetings starting in May. We'll continue this month. We'll finish up this month in this format, virtual. So for the benefit of those who might not have a printed agenda in front of them, I want to take a moment to read through all of the items so that you know where the item that you're interested in falls in line on tonight's agenda. There will be 12 items which are on the consent agenda. The consent agenda is non-controversial issues, fairly procedural. The staff has recommended that we consider them all as, we approve them with one motion, one consent agenda item. However, anyone in the public, or anyone on this commission, or the applicant, can request that any one of these consent agenda items be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for a more thorough discussion. And you'll have the opportunity to do that in just a moment at the public hearing on the consent agenda. So items 1 through 12 are consent agenda items. Items 13 through page 19. Sorry about that. Items 13 through 18 are regular agenda items. And then we'll have a 19, which is procedural. So let me read through these real quick. Items 1 through 12 are the consent agenda items, and they include item number one is surety renewals and extensions from City of Gallatin. Item number two is capstone assisted living, number one subdivision. It's accepting the public improvements. Item number three is wind song, Phase 2C and 2D Final Master Development Plan. Item number four is wind song, Phases 2C and 2D Preliminary Platte. Item number five is Dutch Brothers Coffee, amended preliminary master development plan. Item number six is McCain's Station, amended preliminary master development plan. Item number seven is McCain Station, Phase 1, Commercial Lots 4 and 5, Final Platte. Item number eight is Cumberland Point, Phase 2, Final Platte. Item number nine is Newman's Crossing, Phase 2, Final Platte. Item number 10 is Foxland, Phase 2, Section 5, Preliminary Platte. And item number 11 is Foxland, Phase 2, Section 5, Final Platte. Item number 12 is Gallatin Industrial Park, Phase 4, Final Platte. Those 12 items are the ones that will be listed as consent agenda items. The other remaining items on the agenda that we'll discuss are item 13, which is Kennesaw Farms Lots 5 and 6, amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Item number 14 is Vintage Baker's Crossing Apartments, Final Master Development Plan. Number 15 is Triple Creek, I'm sorry, Triple Brook rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Item number 16 is the Banner at Westfield, amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Item number 17 is Red River Road Town Homes rezoning with preliminary master development plan. And item number 18, Comfort Inn at Baker's Crossing, an architectural change. And then item number 19, we'll get down to some procedural discussion of the Planning Commission bylaws. I failed to mention that on the regular agenda items, all of the regular agenda items except for Vintage Baker Crossing Apartments will have a public comment section. I'm sorry, that and the Comfort Inn at Baker's Crossing. Those two don't have a designated public comment. So if you have comments on those, you're welcome to give it at the open public comment here at the beginning. So with that, well, I will open a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to remove any of those consent agenda items 1 through 12 and place them on the regular agenda, or has a comment about them, or a general comment about any other issue? I'll open the public comment. Josh?
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Perrier. If you are joining us from the general audience, if you hit star nine on your telephone, it'll raise your hand. Or if you are joining us via the computer, if you could use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the screen, it will let us know you'd like to speak on this item. If you are streaming this meeting on Facebook, we ask you to click on the Zoom link to join the meeting to be able to participate in the public comment for this meeting. It is posted about three times in and around where Facebook is live streaming this meeting. So again, star nine, if you're joining us via telephone, raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen if you're joining via the computer, or if you're live streaming this on Facebook, click on the Zoom link and join the Zoom meeting in order to fully participate in the public comment period. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak on any of the consent agenda items.
Very well. At this time, saying no, no one. I will close the public comment. And I will ask, is there any member of the Commission who wishes to remove any of the consent agenda items and place them on the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 12 as consent agenda items.
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Harris.
This I get.
We have a second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on items 1 through 12? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you please take a roll call vote, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda items 1 through 12, indicate by saying aye?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
Dr. Organe.
Aye.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mary Ann. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda, starting with item number 13, which is Resolution Number 2021-054, Kennesaw Farms Lots 5 and 6, an amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. This item will include a public comment section. Which staff member is presenting this item?
Jillian Ogden, Staff Planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jillian.
Yes, the owner and applicant requests approval of an amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan to construct a multi-tenant building on two lots totaling 2.45 acres located north of Nashville Pike and west of Kennesaw Boulevard. This is two of the Kennesaw Farms out parcels that we are talking about this evening. Next slide, please. The site plan includes an 18,900-square-foot multi-tenant building with adjacent parking and landscaping. They will be combining two existing lots into one lot. Next slide, please. Most of their stormwater will be handled underground. That was something they had to get figured out for this site. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting approval of an alternative buffer yard plan and an alternative architecture plan. The rear buffer yard is only seven feet when 10 feet is required, but they are providing a wider buffer yard along Nashville Pike than is required to compensate for this. And the rear buffer yard is against a private access easement. So these have been pretty typical for these out parcels and how this is laid out. Additionally, sidewalks meander through the buffer yards, and this is also very common for these out parcels, just due to the location of ditches and how the sidewalks are configured. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The architecture plan includes predominantly cementous board and batten siding with a stone veneer base and does not meet the brick-stone requirement. However, it is in keeping with the equestrian-style architecture associated with Kennesaw Farms. So this is very typical of what we are seeing for these out parcels. Most notably, the platinum storage has a similar aesthetic to this one. The proposed retail and food service uses are consistent with the intended purpose of the Kennesaw Farms out parcels, and the architecture complements the style and intent of the Kennesaw Farms development. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider this request a minor amendment to the preliminary master development plan for Kennesaw Farms. Staff also recommends that the Planning Commission approve the request with 14 conditions. So for this item, you will need to vote on minor or major, and then have a vote following that. And the applicant, I believe, should be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant present and wanting to speak?
I've unmuted Cal, Jason Morlock, and Andy Leaf.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Andy Leaf, representing the owner and developer. I'm here for any questions that you have. Cal is here as the Kennesaw rep. He's reviewed the plans, and we feel like we have his blessing, the Kennesaw blessing to move forward with this.
Andy, is the applicant in agreement with all 14 conditions that staff has placed on this?
Yes, sir. I think we've already taken care of most of them, to be honest with you.
Okay. Very good. Did anyone else wish to speak, or your comments sufficient?
I don't know. Cal's here, if he'd like to.
Okay, well, I'll keep it moving. At this time, I'll open it to, I'll open a public comment. If there's anyone in the public who would like to address item number 13, which is Kennesaw Farms Lots 5 and 6.
If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone to raise your hand, and that will let us know that you'd like to speak on this item. We have, well, we have Cal Gentry.
Okay. Sorry, Chairman Perrier, I couldn't get unmuted. Something on my end, but we're fine with the proposal that Andy's turned in. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Do we have anyone else raising their hand? Josh?
Mr. Chairman, no one else has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak on this item.
Very well. At this time, seeing none, I'll close the public comment on item number 13. And the first thing we need to address is whether this is a major or a minor amendment. I'll just remind everyone that major versus minor, major is changes in circulation density, usage, or major significant changes in architecture. I see none of those. So I'll entertain a motion. Does anyone feel it's a major or a minor?
Big emotion, that'd be a minor amendment.
Motion by Mr. Harris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Stroudler. Any discussion on major versus minor? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, will you take a vote? All those in favor that it be considered a minor amendment, indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes 7-0 as a minor.
Very well. Thank you. This time, if anyone has questions for the applicant, or staff, or I'll entertain a motion.
We approve with 14 recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Wilson to approve with all 14 of staff's recommendations. A second on that?
Second.
We have a second by Mrs. Hibbler. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Any, all those in favor of approval of item number 13, with all 14 staff's conditions, indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, take a roll call vote, please.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number 14, which is Resolution Number 2021-044. It's Vintage Baker's Crossing Apartments, Final Master Development Plan. This item does not include a public comment. Which staff member is presenting this item?
Jillian Ogden, Staff Planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jillian.
Yes, the owner and applicant requests approval of a final master development plan for the Vintage Baker's Crossing Apartments on a 26.09-acre portion of two parcels located north of Nashville Pike and west of Tulip Poplar Drive. Next slide, please. The site plan includes 252 apartment units and 11 buildings, and adjacent greenway easements, landscaping, and parking. The proposed architecture and layout are consistent with the approved PMDP. All elevations also meet the 70% brick and stone requirements. Next slide, please. This is their drainage plan. Next slide, please. And the landscaping plan. Next slide, please. The developer and the city of Gallatin are negotiating a possible donation of approximately 8.17-acre area along East Camp Creek to the city of Gallatin for a public park, including an extension of the Gallatin Greenway Master Plan. This area is located primarily within the floodplain along East Camp Creek. You'll see that area outlined on the left side of your screen. The development shall still be credited for the full 26.09 acres for the purposes of applying current and future density calculations. Any land donation would go to City Council for review and possible acceptance. Next slide, please. And then this is the architecture for this development. Next slide, please. We can go through these, showing how they have the two stories along Tulip Poplar, but the remaining buildings are three stories. And then towards the end, we will see a couple renderings. Yep, and then keep it on this last one. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the request with 13 conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant present online?
Gina Emanuel, Centric Architecture. I don't know, Greg Harris is also on the line as well.
Chairman, Chairman Perrier, this is Greg Harris with Infield Construction Engineering and representing the owner developer on the project. Spoke with him a couple of days ago. He reviewed the staff's conditions of approval and was fine with that and agreement with those 13 items.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Did Mrs. Emanuel wish to add anything?
I do not at this time.
All right. Thank you. With that, does anyone have any questions for the applicant or staff, or I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Brian with Engineering. I have a comment. After discussion today with the city engineer, we'd like to add another condition, number 14. And it involves a traffic impact study. We haven't had time to send that out to our consultant to review thoroughly, but we would like to have an approved traffic impact study. And if there are any recommendations in that study that will revise the FMDP, we like to make that a condition of approval. So if you need wording for that, it would be something to the effect of applicant shall have an approved traffic impact study with the study's recommendation shown on the FMDP.
Brian, I got a question for you, if I could.
Yes, sir.
So, based on language of that condition, are we obligating the applicant to implement whatever proposals were required by traffic study?
Yeah, so one of the issues that we've had is with the right-hand turn lane off of Nashville Pike into Tulip Poplar. And the numbers that they used for their traffic impact study are good, but I don't think they're adequate for what COVID numbers have done. So we wanted our consultant to look at that. And if that comes back where they have to add that turn lane in, that will give us a reason to go ahead and have that as a requirement.
Brian, I would rather word, if we're going to put, I don't like putting an open-ended condition on the applicant. I don't think the applicant wants an open-ended condition. It's kind of like an
I agree.
But I think we could tie that to the turn lane specifically, that if the traffic signal, as if the traffic study warrants the turn lane, that the applicant agrees to add that at the FMD stage. And I want to hear from the applicant, too, to find out if they
Sure. Let me just add one more. Yeah, let me just add one more thing. The way the study said, it said all existing lineage at that intersection was adequate. So it might be where they might have to do some left-hand turn lane improvements, too. I don't think so, based on what they gave us for numbers. But I know that the city engineer and applicant have had conversations at the pre-app meeting about a right-hand turn lane. So if you want to limit to that, to the right-hand turn lane, I think the city engineer would be okay with that if the applicant is okay with that.
Okay. Since this is a new condition, without taking an official vote, is the body mind, if we suspend the rules and ask the applicant to weigh in or to speak again? Does anyone have any objections?
No objections.
Okay, very good. Mr. Harris, or Greg Harris, would you like to comment on this?
Yes. We've been in contact with Nick and Brian on this for the last week or so. And the applicant is aware that the is aware that the possibility could come up tonight about this, and we spoke about it earlier. And as long as it is only for the right turn lane, he was fine with at least studying that and seeing if it is warranted. And so that, I think that language that Brian referred to, if we can, just limit it to the, to the right turn lane, that would be, that would be fine. He'll be fine with that.
Well, I believe I heard Mr. Harris, Mr. Russ Snyder's also said there might, there could possibly be some implications about the left turn movement. Is that correct, Brian?
It is a possibility. Again, the numbers that were taken with the counts were not, I, I forget the term, but it, it wasn't calculated with COVID factor in it, so that would be the only reason. I don't think there'll be a left-hand turn lane requirement. But just, I don't want to, I want to be fair, is what I want to be, so.
Very well. I'm going to take a stab at this and say, I'll make a motion for approval with staff's thirteen conditions, but I will add a fourteenth condition that said that the applicant shall have an approved traffic impact study. And the implications of that traffic impacts study. I didn't have time to write this statement. Which may impact the final master development plan per the traffic study. Terribly worded. You want to write, you want to give us the wording, Brian?
You want it now, or do you want it?
We've got it included in the motion.
Applicants shall have an approved traffic impact study with the study's recommendation shown on the FMDP. Do you say something like, with, with the possibility of a right-hand turn lane warrant? Does that sound fair?
That sounds fair. That doesn't mention anything about a left turn movement, but the applicant's already said they're okay with what you just worded for the right.
Question for clarification if I could. Brian, I understand the traffic study has already been done. You guys are wanting to have the city of Gallatin's consultant review it. Not a new traffic study done, is that correct, or am I misunderstanding?
That, that is correct. The traffic impact study is done. It was submitted. We would like to have our consultant look at it and just make sure that it, it's in conformity with what you would see now for COVID factor.
Okay, so. Could, could I, could I propose that that language for a fourteenth amendment be worded something more along the lines that the, the applicant's submitted traffic study to be reviewed by the city of Gallatin's consultant, and if found warranted, right-hand turn improvements would be made?
I think that would be fair, yes. Does that sound good, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, that's, that's more in line with what we were, you know, expecting on that.
Okay, well then I, that, I, I think that wording would be more clear for me.
Okay, well then just to make that official, I'm going to withdraw my motion, and Matt, you just made the motion for approval.
Yeah, motion, motion to approve with staff's thirteen conditions and the addition of the fourteenth condition that the applicant's traffic study that has been submitted will be reviewed by the city of Gallatin's consultant, and if found to be warranted, right-hand turn improvements will be made.
Great job, I'll second that. Discussion?
Could someone remind me of what materials this is, as far as brick or stone?
It is, they do meet the seventy percent brick and stone requirement, so it is mostly brick construction.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Love, I'll add a comment. The, the architecture, the brick and stone that they're proposing aesthetically is, is very good, so as much as some folks don't want apartments, this is, this is going to be well done, I believe.
And just to reiterate, this was rezoned years ago.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, this is, this, this zoning was done long before us.
Absolutely agree. Any other?
If you can hear me, one thing I would like to remind everybody is that in case, again, I'm getting a message of internet connection is unstable, so I'm not sure if you can hear me, but that the fourteenth condition applies to a right turn lane westbound at the Tulip Poplar intersection, not into this development. So I'm not sure if that was clearly conveyed, so that, that would be for a right turn lane on Nashville Pike, turning right into Tulip Poplar Drive, and not a right turn lane into or out of the complex onto Tulip Poplar Drive.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah, that was my understanding. Did anyone have a different understanding?
Now, that was my understanding when I made the motion, that the right turn improvement would be Nashville Pike into Tulip Poplar.
Mary Ann, just please record that in minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the motion by Mr. Harris and seconded by myself with the thirteen conditions plus the additional fourteenth condition added by Mr. Harris, indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Aye.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We'll move on to item number fifteen, which is resolution number two zero two one dash zero five two. Triple Brook rezoning with preliminary master development plan. This item will include a public comment. We'll start out with hearing from staff. Which staff members presenting this item?
Dustin Shane, Staff Planner.
All right, thank you. Go ahead Dustin.
All right, so this is, as said, the Triple Brook rezoning with PMDP. This project was before you last month and has went back to the drawing board and came back with a new design. It's located on the west side of Northwater. You can barely see it up there. This menu's covering it, but it's on the west side of Northwater across from a commercial strip and a apartment complex. Currently, the front half of the property is zoned MRO, and the back half is zoned CG, Commercial General. So currently, it's a, it's a point eighty-seven acre parcel. This is a view from Northwater of the existing Tudor-style home that was built around nineteen fifty that's on the property now. They're proposing to resubdivide the property and add three more single-family homes around the one that's existing. They want to rezone the entire property to MRO to support this, this development. They want to have access to Tremble Avenue here in the back, so one of the conditions that they've agreed to is to extend Tremble Avenue under its current profile up to this area so that there can be a, a drive-through for this, the northwest lot. Also, they did meet our, our request that there be a place for cars to back up so that they don't have to back out onto Northwater. This is the architecture that they're proposing, so they are asking for an exception to brick or stone. One of our conditions is that they, is that they extend that, that stone water table around the entire, each facade of the house. As far as whether it's compatible architecturally, some of the other houses, these are some houses that are on Tremble behind it. So you see there are some different types of exterior cladding that's, that's used in the neighborhood. This is a painted brick house down the, down the street on Northwater. Here's another brick Tudor nearby. And then here's a, I think that's either lap siding or vinyl siding just next door. So there is a, a good variety in the neighborhood, so we do recommend this project. Thank you.
Mute button was on, sorry. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Phone caller with the last three, zero, two, three. If you hit star six to unmute yourself, you are unmuted. Well.
Well, let me, let me do this a little out of order. If we don't, if we haven't been able to make contact with the applicant's representative yet, let me go ahead and open a public comment, and we can work on that connection, so we'll hear from the applicant, either during the public comment or at the end.
Oh, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Who do we have?
So, this is Kyle Snyder with Clover Engineering. Sorry about that.
Not at all, that's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Snyder.
Yep, no, I just said, we agree with everything Dustin went over. The extended stone facade shouldn't be an issue. And that's, that's all I got, really.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snyder. At this time, I'll open this item to a public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak regarding item number fifteen, which is Triple Brook rezoning with preliminary master development plan?
Please use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone to raise your hand. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak on this item.
All right, very well. At this time, I've seen none, I'll close the public comment. And we'll take questions from the members of the commission to staff or to the applicant, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Matt Harris. Mr. Harris, is that with all four staff conditions?
Yes, sir, it is the staff's four conditions.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alana Hibbler. Any discussion?
The, the only comments I have on this is, you know, I think the applicant did a good job of accommodating our question and work session with the stone water table around the, the foundations and extending the drive, so I think it was good.
Very well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and that's a motion to approve with all four staff's conditions. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, we just take a roll call vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler. Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Item number sixteen is resolution number two zero two one dash zero four eight. The banner at Westfield, an amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Which staff members presenting this item?
Jillian Ogden, Staff Planner.
Thank you, go ahead Jillian.
Yes, the owner and applicant request approval of an amended preliminary master development plan for Westfield and a final master development plan for the banner at Westfield on a twenty-six acre portion of a parcel located south of the CSX Railroad and east of Big Station Camp Boulevard. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The site plan includes two hundred and eighty-four apartment units and eleven buildings with adjacent parking and landscaping. They did redo the layout from what was approved with the PMDP, but this is a much, much more logical layout with nice open spaces and courtyard spaces in this area. Next slide, please. These slides go through some of the bio-retention ponds in the stormwater. It does connect also into that cul-de-sac for an emergency exit. Landscaping plan is compliant throughout. There are already berms installed along the CSX Railroad. Next slide, please. And then there are three layouts for the architecture. The owner and applicant do request an exception to the height restrictions for the apartment complex. MU zoning allows a maximum height of thirty-five feet, and the FMDP indicates a maximum height of forty feet for the apartment buildings. PGC zoning, which is actually adjacent to this property to the north and in other parts of the Westfield Development, allows a maximum height of forty feet, so staff does not believe this height request is inappropriate for this area, nor does it have significant impact on neighboring properties as this is within the Westfield Development and adjacent to a railroad and future commercial development. The three-story buildings feature a pitched roof and a primarily horizontal cementia siding with stone veneer construction on all facades. The proposed garages will follow a similar style and material breakdown. The approved PMDP and previous iterations of these apartments included an exception to the seventy percent brick and stone requirement, so that is not, not a new exception here. They, they do not have to meet that requirement per their previous approvals. While the final coloring and design has changed, the proposed architecture, including building materials, is generally consistent with the PMDP. The proposed amendments such as revised architecture and layout and the height exception have little impact on neighboring properties and will allow for a better, better final product. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider this request a minor amendment to the preliminary master development plan for Westfield. This does have a public comment due to, due to the amendment, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the request with ten conditions. Thank you.
Thank you Jillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant online?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman Cal Gentry with Southeastern Building. We agree with all staff comments and just here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you Cal. At this time, I'll open this to a public comment. If there's anyone in the public who wishes to speak in regards to item number sixteen, the banner at Westfield.
If you would like to speak on this item, please indicate so by using the raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen, or hit star nine on your telephone. We do have one person that wishes to speak. Michelle, your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Josh?
We can hear you.
Okay, this is Michelle Juvance, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. I had a question about this apartment complex, and then also the other one, I guess I raised my hand, but I guess there wasn't a public hearing on the other one, but is there, are there playgrounds or anywhere for the kids to play in these apartment complexes? Because I'm concerned about that. I, when I drive along Greenlee Boulevard and the Edison at Peyton Downs Apartments are right there along the road, and I see kids just playing out kind of in the open space where the retention ponds are, and they just, like, kids play outside and they need a space to play, and it, it seems that there wasn't somewhere to play, so they're rolling down the little hill of the retention pond, and if it's raining, or if it had rained and it's full of water, then that's not good for the kids. So I, I just wanted to know if the, all of these apartment complexes that we have been approving have somewhere for the kids to play, and then the last one, they're saying they want to donate land for a park, which sounds great, but I mean, if the kids are going to play in the park, that means that we have to spend our taxpayer dollars to actually make a park for them to play in first, which I think that the actual developers should be making these playgrounds and areas for the kids to play in. And that's my comment on these apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And just to address your concern, no, there was not a scheduled public comment with the other, the vintage Baker Crossing Apartments because it wasn't a rezoning or what's considered a major change, but, but I appreciate your comments on this one. Do we have anyone else who wishes? Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak on, on item number fifteen?
Raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen.
Start at number sixteen.
Star nine on your telephone. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has indicated they'd like to speak on this item.
Okay, then at this time, seeing that, I'll, I will close the public comment. The first thing we need to address is whether this is a major or a minor change. Again, major is a major change in architecture, usage, density, circulation. I don't really see any of those myself here. I consider it a minor change, but I'll entertain a motion to that effect from someone.
Make a motion that's a minor amendment.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Harris that it's a minor amendment. Do I hear a second?
I saw it.
Albert, is that you? Or was that Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson's.
Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion regarding major versus minor? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of it being considered a minor amendment indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you take the roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler. Passes seven zero is minor.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, at this time, we'll, we'll take questions for staff or for the applicant or I'll entertain a motion regarding item number sixteen.
I, well, I'd like an answer about the playground.
This is Cal Gentry. I'd be happy to respond to that if you'd like.
Thank you.
Would you mind changing the slide to the site plan, please? I'm not sure who has control of that. And just to answer the question that was asked, there, there are four main pods in this site plan layout, each with either three or two buildings. Each pod has an open plaza play area kind of internal to the street network to help be a little more protected. And the first main pod has an actual playground adjacent to the pool, but outside the pool fence. So we feel like we've provided lots of areas for the kids to play and they're spaced out throughout the, the project as well as being internal and protected. So hopefully that'll answer that question.
Thank you.
So, and I just wanted to comment, one, one of the things I appreciated about this, this site layout, I've looked it over. They had, of course, a dog park, which has become really popular, but they also had a dedicated boat parking area back to the right side. And I don't know that I've seen that in other layouts, but I thought it's a good amenity. So I just wanted to bring that up. I was interested. I thought that was an interesting amenity for a part, for an apartment complex.
I agree.
Make a motion to approve with staff's ten conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Matt Harris. Do I hear a second?
Sorry.
That was a second by Mr. Stroudler, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? I will. I will just say that, you know, the one thing I looked at was the height exception, but I don't consider that to be a concern because this property is kind of down in a low area. It's kind of, I'm not going to say down in a hole. That's not a good description for any property. But it's down in a low area with the railroad tracks to the north of it. So I don't consider there to be any concern about the, the height restriction on this one. We have a motion on the floor, second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote then. Mary Ann, we, are all those in favor of approval with staff's ten conditions indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, will you take a roll call vote?
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler. Passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number seventeen, which is Red River Road Townhomes. It's a rezoning with preliminary master development plan. And this one will include a public comment. Which staff members presenting this item?
Dustin Shane, staff planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dustin.
So this is a rezoning with a PMDP for townhomes on Red River Road. It's located just north of Red River, the Red River Road in Long Hollow Pike Split. As you can see there, just east of the public housing. So they're proposing to rezone this parcel from R ten to R six with a PMDP for eighty-three townhomes. The comp plan is kind of mixed on how it, how it supports this project. It does not, it does not list R six as a zone for this piece of property, but it does list MRO, which allows for the type of use that the applicants requesting. In particular, the MRO zoning allows for as little as three thousand square feet per unit on site. And this development provides over forty-two hundred square foot per unit on site. And also there is R six located to the north. So it does make sense from a zoning map perspective to have R six in this area. The comp plan does call for less density in this area, but as I pointed out, the MRO zoning would allow for much more density. And it is a good infill location as far as the types of uses that are around it, the type of transition it creates from the industry or the commercial area to the east and the public housing to the west. So those are some considerations to think about. The proposed architecture has been changed, so it no longer meets the brick or stone requirement. But the, the thing we like about this design is that it's basically has a double front facade. So that addresses our concern about the townhomes that are going to face Red River Road. They won't have their back turned to Red River Road because the, the backsides will look like front facades. So that addresses that comment we made. The, the applicant also addressed the issue of the sidewalk and the sidewalk connectivity. And then is also indicated that they do plan to sprinkle the development as the code department would require. There's, as far as trip generation and traffic, Bill did a trip generation for this project based on the different zonings. So at the top, the two hundred and eighty-six daily trips, that's how much it would generate under current zoning with no further entitlements. The middle number, two seventy-nine, is if they did got a conditional use permit for multifamily and kept the zoning. And then the five hundred here at the bottom is what the applicant is currently requesting. So it's not significantly higher based on the amount of extra housing that you're getting for, for that, that number of trips. And then, Mr. Chair, you may want to talk more about this, but this is a design that's showing a, a idea about a roundabout that could be incorporated here with this project. So we can have that discussion too.
Yeah, we'll come back to that. We'll come back to that slide in a minute. We'll start. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Yes, this is Chairman Perrier. This is Andy Leith with Greenlee Design. I'm here. I'll say we're in agreement with all staff comments. That roundabout wasn't in the staff comments, so we may need to discuss that one. But other than that, we're in agreement with all comments.
No, I understand, Andy, that we're not trying to throw you a curveball.
That's okay.
We'll, we'll get to that in a minute. At this time, I'll open a public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak in regard to item seventeen, Red River Townhomes?
If you're a member of the public and would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen. Hit star nine if you are calling into the meeting. And if you're watching this meeting on Zoom, or I'm sorry, if you're watching this, this meeting streamed on Facebook, you must be in the Zoom meeting. Click on one of the links that surrounds the video to join the Zoom meeting. And at this time, we have one person that indicated they'd like to speak. Michelle, your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. This is Michelle Juvance again. So about this townhouse development. I have some concerns about this location adding a high-density residential development right here. It's a bad location because of that intersection. It's really difficult to get out of that intersection where that stop sign is. And I don't think that we should add a high-density development right at that location until the, that three-way stop sign is figured out. I'm interested to hear about the discussion with the roundabout. And my other concern was about the, also has to do with, with the same, same thing. With this only having one way in and one way out with, for eighty-six townhouses is a bad idea. And I'm not talking about just because of fire reasons, because if it's going to be sprinkled, I mean, that takes care of that. But what about the actual future potential residents that are living in that development? I have a friend who lives in a townhouse development in Franklin and it's a, it's, it's a one-way in, one-way out on a busy two-lane highway and it's almost impossible to get out of her subdivision at some times of the day and it's really annoying. And I don't think that it's a good idea to design something that the future residents that are going to be living there are going to be lined up waiting to get out at certain times of the day and just be annoyed. I think that when things are designed, they should be designed for the, for the people who live there to have a happy, pleasant life and not to have an annoyance like that where they just can't even get out of their subdivision. So that's a concern that I have with this development because of the location and that intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in regards to this item?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one else has raised their hand indicating they'd like to speak.
All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. This is, I'm looking through my notes. We do not need to vote. This is not a major minor amendment. It's not a final master development plan, so. We will move straight to questions from members of the commission for staff or for the applicant or discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Organe.
I don't know if engineering or planning is better. The idea of a roundabout is a great idea. Since I live on the twenty-five side, about eighty percent of the traffic, if they're leaving downtown, about eighty percent of the traffic that's going to turn on to twenty-five never bothered to put on a blinker. And, and from a technical, technical standpoint, the volume, as the citizen spoke about it a couple of minutes ago, the volume at times on Long Hollow Pike portion, that volume is really high and does, is it, is that a calming component? Or when you have a low volume from one part into a high volume on the other part, is, does that complicate things? Because I think it's a really good idea if it's properly designed.
And thank you, Dr. Organe. I think I better step in now because I'm sure Andy wondered where this, this came from. I, this is something I drew this afternoon and sent it over and asked staff just to have it because I communicate my ideas better visually than I can verbally. But I'm not an engineer. I've never even played one on TV. So I don't put too much stock in this. But what you see there is thirty-three percent larger than the roundabout on Green Lake Boulevard, which has a sixty-four foot inside diameter. So I tried to scale it up to show kind of a worst-case scenario. But the point here is that with the addition of, or with the approval of the Bowles Farm, what is it, six hundred and forty units out there and we have so much other development. There's going to be a lot more pressure on Red River Road coming in towards Gallatin. I'll also mention that right now, we're trying to work with TDOT on getting an approval of a study to fix our major corridor problem from Long Hollow Pike over to the connection to one oh nine. If that gets improved, that's going to put a lot more, that's going to create, this is even more of a gateway into our community for traffic to come in. And this, this intersection point is a terrible intersection. As, as Bill stated earlier in a discussion today, this goes all the way back to the days when there were some cattle paths coming in, some wagon roads, and they converged at this point, Red River Road and Long Hollow Pike, weird angle. And we're stuck with this intersection that's, this doesn't have a good design. So my amateur suggestion is that if this were converted to a roundabout, this could solve a lot of problems at this intersection point. I'll also just go ahead and point out immediately that after I sent this in today, I realized that that northerly entrance to the roundabout that goes into the property in question here tonight, that's a bad idea. You don't want trucks accidentally taking the wrong turn off of roundabout and ending up in a townhome development. So nix that. But the whole reason for including that in this discussion is that we have an opportunity right now to, to, if we could get some dedication of some ground there from that property, leave enough room to create that roundabout right there and we can solve this intersection problem. But once this gets developed out with the townhomes in place, we, we're going to be boxed in and we'll never be able to fix this intersection. So I think a discussion needs to take place tonight about.
That is a great idea. Great, great visualization of if the roundabout is the right size, I don't think you would have to worry about trucks going into the private area either. But it's a great idea. That, that's where the staff comes in.
Yeah, they, they need to put the right measurements to. If anything, I've made it too big, just so.
No, you haven't.
Andy, would you like to, since we've thrown this, it's absolute curveball. Do you want to respond to this?
Sure. I, I think that the roundabout is a good idea as well. I also think that we can probably not, I, I can't, I can't speak for my client, but I do feel like that there, if you look at our plan, we have left some, we naturally had some, not leftover land, but we had some space there in that area you're talking about that we could probably work with dedicating a piece of that land to the city or a future, future roundabout there. And I don't think it's going to impact what we're proposing is that much.
Let's don't do the future. Let's do it right now.
Well, no, this, this sounds good. Can we hear from our engineering department?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Brian with Engineering, Brian Risher with the Engineering Department. I like the direction you're heading. I would like you to consider moving this to the west and I'll tell you why. We've looked at this before. We want to pick up Maple Street and bring an elevated crossing across the CSX railroad. Yeah, you're not going to have enough room, Dustin, probably to show this. And then come alongside the east side of our office space here into Long Hollow Pike. Put the roundabout there. We would look at buying probably two or three properties right adjacent to us in order to make that about that size. And then we would proceed north to Red River Road tied in. And of course, we'd have to work with TDOT on all of this. But for tonight's purposes, we would not need any right-of-way or property from this development in order to do that.
That's even a better idea. The quicker we get there, the better.
Yeah, and it gets the traffic, it gets another crossing over the railroad where we don't have to wait on traffic, which is one of the reasons why Long Hollow Pike likes to back up during the AM and PM peak periods. Right now. I have a hard time turning left out when it's four thirty time to go home because there's so much traffic in Long Hollow Pike corridor right now.
Well, hurry up.
Brian, would yeah, I was aware of the the possibility of the Maple Street connection and roundabout there. If we get that, will we still have the problem of this wonky triangle intersection over here? Or would we actually close the that intersection down?
We would work with T dot to close that down. That gas station would be the last driveway on that little leg, and then the rest of that would get would go away.
Okay. So.
So we have, we have looked at this, and it is something that, you know, the city engineer has has pursued in the past. And I think he's actually even had a cost estimate done and presented it to council. So it's definitely something on our radar. But but as everything, you know, it's it's money and it's time. So it's kind of where we're at.
For the sake of this evening's conversation, is there any negative to some dedicated right of way for this project in the event that, you know, that option's not feasible in the near future or the roundabout? You know, comes back as being the better option to where we're not, you know, landlocking ourselves, so to speak, at this point, where we have an applicant that might be willing to work with us?
That is a good question. I I can answer that tonight for you. Hate to sound like the famous cliche. I'll have to circle back with you on that. But yeah, we'd have to get with the engineer and and Andy and his developer and and see if there's possibility to do that roundabout in a different locale. But I I think moving it to the west is ideal because the city owns a lot of the right of way. Coming across Maple Street where we can do an elevated crossing, get it onto city property, run it parallel to our our it's going to take out our recycling area. We'll have to move that. But we're looking at taking out two houses. You know, the city acquiring that property in order to build that and then running straight north into Red River. So where there is no development right now.
And Brian, this is, I know this may be going down another rabbit hole, but I just wanted to mention tonight that that sketch that I did for a roundabout, it does impact another property, and that is that convenience store. But are there any, are there any, is there anything in the plan to address the fact that that convenience store is one of those odd properties that has a two hundred foot wide curb cut? Right at a terrible intersection, by the way.
Yeah, that's not textbook. That's for sure. Of course, that that's been around for a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, not the one at the triangle, but across the street.
Yeah, Johnny, did you want to say something, Mr. Wilson?
I can mention that there's always a car park. I think somebody's trying to sell something all the time. And when you are on Highway twenty five, you can't tell if that car is trying to come out. And the cars change frequently. So it's hard to tell if they're in the gas station lot trying to come out or if it's just parked there. So that that that's an issue.
Dr. Organe, is that on the Witz barbecue side of Red River or on the north side of Red River?
It's on the other side. It's it's not that. It's not that station in the Y. It's the one right across the street from the Y.
Okay.
And it's almost straight in front of the stop sign at Highway twenty five and Long Hollow Pike. There's there are different cars there all the time, parked right out on the street as if they're ready to pull out.
We'll have our zoning enforcement. We'll start monitoring that area a little bit more and work with codes enforcement if we need to proceed that to that to that level.
All right, then. Do you mind going back to the 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 roundabout sketch just for a second? Because Matt made a really good suggestion. The engineering's approach to getting a crossing over mate over the railroad tracks and making the Maple Street extension handle this flow traffic is a much better idea. It also involves a crossing over the railroad tracks. I mean, it's a big project. If the current applicant can work with setting aside just enough right of way to preserve this option right here, then I would certainly have no trouble with the density that they're asking for. And I I might mention that, you know, we do need affordable housing and what they're providing is is I think an attempted of affordable housing in the area. It doesn't necessarily meet our suburban comp plan. But it's close, especially if they're willing to preserve this option of a roundabout as a backup plan for us. Get rid of the northern entrance to the roundabout. We don't need all that. We just need a little bit of a bump out that engineering can work through. Andy, you seem to feel like you could modify your plan to leave this open and and available this right of way dedication, which would still count towards your open space.
I've, yeah, I feel like that we can modify the plan to accommodate what you're requesting. And I feel like we can do so in such a way as for this to not cause us to lose any density. So if this needs to be a condition of approval, I don't think that my client would say no to this to get this approved.
Okay. Then Matt, you were really close to making a motion. Do you want, do you want to be the one to make a motion? Or I'm sorry, is there any other discussion before we have a motion? Alana, go ahead.
About the density? I heard some part of it, it went from low to high and didn't consider the medium density type. And I'm looking at the surrounding areas. Why is the the mid mid level density not being considered? Was it just going straight high from townhomes? I understand that's multiple closer together, you know, still spaces needed kind of for breathing room. And I didn't know why it went from single family homes in the area to maybe, you know, super high density, didn't understand that transition.
So it's currently R ten. I think the exhibit that Mr. McCord used to illustrate the the traffic volumes, he used single family, multifamily is allowable in RTN. Now, he's got that multifamily as well there. That's allowable in RTN. We chose to come in and ask for R six because R six is, and I don't have the zoning map pulled up right in front of him, Miss Lana, but Dustin can correct me if I'm wrong, but R six pretty well is all around us. At least it's to the rear of us back there, and then it extends. Our six stands pretty far north to us. So we felt like that our our six was a reasonable request. We've got commercial to our east and the Housing Authority to our west. Theirs own RTN, but they have more of a multifamily type. I guess those are duplexes over there, but more multifamily type. So we chose to ask for R six because of those reasons. The other thing, too, is the R eight and R ten doesn't seem to allow for the attached to single family attached product that that R six does allow for.
Say say that one last thing again, Andy. I'm sorry.
The R eight and R ten zoning doesn't allow, they they both allow for multifamily, but they don't allow for the attached product, which we call townhomes. Or we call townhomes the the single family attached in Galton. And so we asked for R six to get that single family attached product and because it's adjacent to us as the what's on the screen here now shows the R six is to the north and pretty well extends pretty good ways to the north there.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill, one of the, we do allow attached units in the R eight and R ten, and you could get those achieve those with the conditional use permit. One that was done recently was on Cotton Street at Broadway. There is, I think there are six units there. Those are attached units and that's owned RTN. They've got a conditional use permit. And that's an option that they have here. It generally would be about the same type of impact. It would be actually more than you would get for a single family home. You know, keeping in mind that we do have higher density residential to the north, including a new development and public housing complex, which is multifamily to the west, commercial to the south and to the east and pretty high intensity commercial, almost a light industrial use on the commercial property to the east. So yes, the comp plan kind of dissuades this. I want you to know that this R ten zoning has been on this property for many, many years. And the character of this area and the area in the downtown area is not conducive to certainly not single family homes in the R ten district. That's not what we're going to be seeing in the downtown area. We retain that in the historic district, but in some of these areas that are in need of development or redevelopment, that's not what we're trying to promote. So one of the options and what we provided for in the resolution is instead of our six zoning is to go to the MRO zoning, which also would allow for professional offices and a variety of of low intensity commercial uses should the residential aspect not be developed or only partially developed. So it gives more options. It creates a better transition between the high intensity commercial zoning that you have surrounding the property on two sides to the even high and medium density residential that you have to the west. So that's the basis for the recommendation.
I just just looking at this feels really dense for that, not just for the certain area for the troops, but just having that much in that space, just knowing it's how open the space is right now in the adjoining property. I think it's where the R ten actual words are in that area. I just, it just visually looks really dense. And I wasn't, I wasn't sure if the the R six above, even though they can have a high density, how dense that actual area was. Or is, sorry. Does that make sense?
But you've still got some vacant properties up there to the north. I mean, Mr. McCord, I'm not, I'm not, he might speak better than I can. There's been some redevelopment in that area to the north as well. I know that the city's probably seen several site plans where they've taken down one unit and built back two or even three. I don't know. I do know that if you drive through there in some of those areas, you do see some redevelopment going on where they are getting more dense than what it is right now. But the city staff can comment much better than I can to that effect.
On on one of the stack, one, one of the the units, how many individual doors on there on per building?
On our plan?
Correct.
It's, so when you look at it, there's, there's only, they're they're traditional townhomes. So when you enter in, you own, one person's going to own the ground floor and the second story. That's it.
Right, right. I'm just saying on that run on a building.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, four. Four per building. Some of them are three, some of them are four. That's, I don't think we're showing anything above four.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I can see what Alana is talking about. I mean, it's, it does seem like a lot to be squeezed in there. But like I said, last time we met, the traffic is my main concern. And I went out there a couple of times and turned around so that I was going to turn, trying to turn to go to back to town from the Red River side, and I had to sit there and wait for quite a while each time. And then one morning I was going out of out of Galton on Long Hollow, and this was at about eight o'clock, and the cars were lined up all the way up to the Public Works Building. So I'm, I hesitate to vote yes on this until we know that there can be something done about traffic.
Yeah. I I agree. The traffic in the area is a concern that has been for some time, and I'm glad to hear engineering has some long range plans. And I think, you know, a roundabout is a certainly a good option that might be a less expensive option that could get accomplished, but sooner if it was done in the area. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the project with staff's climate conditions of approval. However, adding a sixth condition of approval, raise the applicant will provide to the city of Galton a dedicated right of way to allow for the future construction of a roundabout in the southeast corner of the property. And the dedicated right of way will still be counted toward density and open space requirements for the project.
A second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris with an additional condition. Well stated condition, by the way. And we have a second by Dr. Organe, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding, if we vote yes tonight, we are only, we are only voting yes for this project to go through if a roundabout is put in in the few.
No, Ms. Love, I think that the the way the motion was worded is we would be voting. Yeah, if you vote yes, you're approving the project. So long as they set aside enough right of way dedication to the city to make possible a roundabout design at Red River Road. But it doesn't mean building the roundabout right now.
And it's your job as our city council person to promote this to the city council and get this on the top corridor so that we can get that bridge across to Maple Street. Small, small thing for you to do.
Yep.
I would, I would argue the the roundabout, even as a temporary fix, you know, even if it was abandoned later, if we ever got the bridge, might even be a good idea, just because I think the odds of getting around about will be much easier than getting the bridge and everything else, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, but I bet that roundabout still a shoot, I don't know. Brian, you want to weigh in? Is that a three million dollar roundabout?
Mr. Chairman, I don't remember. I know it was, it it's going to be expensive. It's going to have to be a capital funded project for sure.
I mean, but you're, we're talking about more than two million?
Let me see if I can find something on the server here.
Well, no, I'm sorry. That's unfair to put you on the spot. Just within the next five minutes, give me the figure to the nearest maybe a hundred dollars, you know?
Mr. Chair. With if if you're going to add a condition about a roundabout that will take additional property from this site and perhaps other properties as well, certainly there's a cost associated with it, but there's also some property that's being removed from the development site. So the the ability to obtain a yield of eighty six units may be jeopardized because of the additional conveyance for right of way. So there's certainly no obligation to, because of that, to require or retain the number of units that are proposed. Now, we've given about three options. There certainly could be other options as well. And you know, there it, they do, if they go with the MRO zoning, they do provide more area on the property than the minimum required, which is three thousand square feet per unit. They do exceed that, but I don't know what they would be after conveyance of the right of way or whether you'd want to treat it similar to the project that we talked about earlier tonight, where they were going to be given credit for density for the donation of a park. You would also maybe ensure that they would be given donation credit for the right of way necessary for a roundabout.
Well, Mr. McCord, I will read back the motion that Mr. Harris made, but I'm pretty sure that Mr. Harris's motion specifically stated that the dedication of the right of way ground not take away from the open space on the property. So I understand what you're saying, that it would lose it off the property if that's necessary, we give the density. Mr. Harris, was that your intention?
It is. The last line of the amendment was that the dedicated right of way shall shall not be counted, yes, or shall be counted towards the density and open space requirements. That is the intent that in exchange for the right of way, we're not going to penalize them with their density for for helping the city potentially solve the problem.
Okay, well, I want to make sure that you're aware that it's not, there's no open space requirement in MRO. So but I believe what you're really trying to say is that you don't want a density penalty because of land to be dedicated, provide for the roundabout. So I think I understand what you're, what you're saying now.
Yeah, that's correct. And.
The app can also reduce it to eighty three in one of the revisions, so they've already brought it down just a tad anyways.
Okay.
I still hesitate to approve this with just a an if out in the future that may or may not be done with the with the traffic situation as it is. I I understand that not at all. situation as it is. I, I understand that not at all times of the day that traffic's bad there, but I think we all know, we've all seen it backed up quite a ways. And not everybody is going to be turning right out of there to go to, you know, towards Hendersonville or towards um, three eighty six. I'm, I would think that there would be people that would be working in Gallatin that would be trying to turn to the left. And it's, uh, it just, it just seems to me like we need to get something done there before we start adding more cars on the road and um more homes. Although I think it would be a gr- a good project as soon as the traffic's problem is settled down.
Yeah. And, and one thing, and kind of relation to that, I've mentioned at the work session is that once Albert Gallatin Avenue is, uh, completed, that will divert a lot of the through trips that are now coming down thirty one and twenty five through town and out this way uh, in the morning, let's say, and then the opposite in the afternoon from using this route, they'll have that option to use the Albert Gallatin extension to get to the east sides of town. And uh, so that we expect, just like when uh, three eighty six opened up, it took a lot of traffic off Nashville Pike. We expect the same thing to happen here. So the bat, the traffic congestion levels on Red River Road, Long Hollow Pike that experienced now shouldn't be that great at a future date when that roadway is completed.
I have a question then for our engineering department. Your idea of extending Tulip Popper Drive, getting flyover across the tracks. Is that kind of a long range vision? Or is that something y'all are proposing in this forthcoming uh capital improvement package?
Uh, so we looked at this initially, um, I'm digging and I can't find what you need. We looked at this back in two thousand and two and brought it before council. And at that time, I think it was tabled. And at that time, it was an at grade crossing, which CSX doesn't allow anymore. They don't like them. Uh, and, and that time it was a half a million uh, to get across the tracks and bringing up Long Hollow Pike excluding a roundabout. Um, we did have a consultant lay a grade and see if it was possible to have clearance because remember now CSX is double stacked tie with everything on their cards. Um, and, and it looks like it will work with the geometry and the grade. But there wasn't a cost estimate associated with that. And I think the council didn't want to revisit uh, looking at it. So my recommendation, if you think we need more time on this, that would probably be a good thing. Uh, so we can get you the, the answers that you need and kind of see where we are uh, with, with dollars and, and everything.
Well, because I share Ms. Low's concern about we approve something, you know, with roundabouts in mind or crossing over the tracks in mind, and then that doesn't materialize for fifteen years, but the townhomes materialize in twenty four months. That's an issue. Do you think you could have cost numbers together in thirty days? I mean, if so, this is truly a, a good reason for a deferral of an item on our part, not the applicant's part. To look at some cost factors.
I think we should vote tonight. And if our vote is positive, it will put pressure on the city council to do what has needed to be done for the last five or six years. And um, I don't think our job is to look at cost. That's not what we do. It's to look at the growth in the vision for the community.
Here, Dr. Orga, I, I'm going to tend to agree with you. I, I think the, I think the applicant deserves a vote on the item tonight. And this is a problem that's existed for many years in Gallatin. And whether it's this project or one further up the road, to think that the traffic volume is going to disappear overnight is not practical on this. So but I, I would not be in favor of deferring this.
Traffic is going to double in the next five years. And
Will.
And city council has kicked this can down the road already for years. So this has nothing to do with Ms. Love. Uh, and I agree with her comments, but we should not hold a developer up. We could have a much worse scenario on that piece of property that we have even less control over.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I think we've given, you know, the roundabout is a great idea. The applicant's willing, it sounds like to dedicate the right of way and create the opportunity for a good solution. So I, you know, I don't think it's fair to defer the item over that. I think we, we need to vote on it.
Is anyone else want to weigh in? Alana?
Well, this, this is not on the, the far apart. So it's after, sorry. Go ahead.
No, you go right ahead.
Um, just from the discussion from R ten to R six, the rezoning, just because of the uh, explanation from uh, Andy, just because it's that, should it not be, well, I'm asking, I guess. Um, the rezoning just because of that, because it, as Mr. Uh, McCord said, it can be a condition of the R, what it currently is. Is that, is that, I mean, I understand that the plan is created for such reasons and kind of stick by and not so much zoning changes. I'm new to this part of it. But you know, if you can keep this, the zoning as it is and permit certain things, I think, I feel that's kind of going along what we're supposed to be doing.
I don't, I believe the current zoning does not allow for the connecting, you know, the townhomes. It doesn't allow for the um, four units per building townhomes. Uh, and nobody's going to build single family homes on the.
No, I, I thought Mr. McCord said that with the condition that's allowed for that area.
Chairman Per Year, but Mr. McCord did correct me on that. And he said that the attached dwellings are allowable with a conditional use permit. Oh. So maybe not the straight zone, but conditional use permit. Uh, but as such, if we go that route and, and Mr. McCord can correct me if I'm wrong, but conditional use permits are spelled out in the zoning ordinance such that if we do the items required, then it's, you know, we, we would be developing it straight, you know, as is without the other things that you guys are talking about here tonight.
So Andy, what you're saying, if we do not change the zoning from what it is right now, then the land dedicated for the roundabout would not be on the table or, or other things?
I'm just saying, I don't know what mechanism the city would have to ask for that if, if we develop straight R ten zoning.
You have none, in my opinion.
If we left it at R ten, how many townhomes would you be able to?
Um, Mr. McCord may be able to speak better on that. Um, I'll try to.
Yeah, I've projected about forty eight based on the restrictions in the R ten zoning district allow one unit per seventy five hundred square feet. So I took that uh, divided it by the eight point three four acres or whatever it was, eight point two eight, I guess. And got up to forty eight units that would be able to be built in there in, with a conditional use permit. There, um, of course, the conditional use permit would be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then as a result of that, if it was approved, then it would come back to the planning commission for approval by uh, plan for that. Uh, essentially it's a site plan and or a plat, it could be a plat, I suppose. So uh, it, it does have a comparable trip generation uh, for single family for a substantial number of units less, eighteen less units. And now that they've dropped uh, their proposal at R six zoning to eighty three, that's going to be less than uh, five hundred daily trips. It'll be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of uh, four hundred and seventy eight or something like that. Which is uh, going to drop your PM peak hour generation rate there too. And so with ten, with, in the R ten zoning with uh, single family homes, you're going to have thirty one peak hour trips, which is your when you really have the traffic congestion occurring on adjacent roadways. And with the R six that they're proposing, you're going to have um, well, now with about eighty six, you're probably going to have about forty three PM peak hour trips. That's not substantially more. And it's on the lower traveled leg of the intersection or, or the segment of Red River Road because traffic volumes are drop off a lot. Other than what's reported here is a section of Red River Road that's east of the intersection, that, that intersection we've talked about, whereas the section of roadway uh, they would be providing access to, at least with their current plan is the, the lower volume roadway. There's only about three or four thousand trips there on that section of Red River Road where their driveway would connect.
Uh, it's long hollow. That's the problem.
Yeah, it is. It, it is a perfect problem. It is. But again, a lot of that traffic is going to be diverted when uh, Albert Gallatin opens up here soon. So those volumes are going to drop on that roadway link and uh, probably would be well below the uh, what, even though we have no adopted level service standards, and I mentioned this before, there are general level service tables that correspond with the daily volume. So and most, a lot of jurisdictions that have adopted level service, they've adopted it as a goal and or a guideline and not necessarily as a, a strict standard to adhere to. Because if you think about it, there are other segments of roadways in the city, including uh, Long Hollow Pike between um, Vietnam vets and Long Hollow Pike intersection and Belvedere, which are technically over capacity. So even a development that occurs on the east side of town can add one, two, three, whatever trips to that segment of roadway. And therefore, using that basis, it would be a, a, a potential reason for disqualification. Uh, many trips, many trips from developments throughout town use that critical segment of roadway. So it, it is over capacity now in the state. Was, as was mentioned earlier, is going, going to be studying that to see what can be done to at least alleviate that temporarily.
Okay.
What is your code?
Go ahead.
I say, Bill, quick question. So would it, would it be fair, would you, you say, in your opinion, when the Albert Gallatin extension is finished, even if these units were added on, on Red River, we would still see a net decrease of the traffic on that road?
Yeah, they, these trips here, they, these thirty one, twenty five, forty five, are really insignificant volumes to be adding to any roadway. What normally would happen is that engineering, based on our ordinance now, would probably not even require a traffic study to be submitted for this much, such a small project. Whereas when they say the apartment complex we discussed earlier would require one because of the size of that. So normally, this would not even come into play as a decision, but certainly it's important in the context of the immediate roadway network because of how it's operating today, not necessarily uh, in a year and through the future even.
But Bill, you're, you're giving us information about Red River, and that's not the problem with this development. In my opinion, it's the traffic that causes the problem is on Long Hollow where cars meet at Red River.
Well, I gave you information on both of those roadways and other roadways in the city that uh, technically are affected by any development that are occurring in the city. So uh, I, I, we, I don't think that it's a good idea to necessarily travel down that path to say we're not going to approve a development or rezoning that will create additional traffic because that traffic may use a segment of roadway that uh, is congested now.
Well, my, my last comment on this, and hopefully we'll bring it to a head soon is, you know, I, I don't see where it is right to deny this particular developer's request based on traffic that we've, we know with, that in the near future is going to improve on the road. And, you know, and the traffic problems, you know, Clay and Long Hollow Pike, which is not even the road, this development's going on. So I don't, I don't see where we want to start a precedent where we're, you know, denying developments based on, you know, traffic counts that are insignificant or likely to improve regardless. That's my opinion.
Let me add also that simply because there's going to be a, a, perhaps a significant diversion of traffic from this roadway here very soon because of other improvements. There will be continued growth after that period, and we'll see that tick up again over time. It may take a while to achieve a maximum capacity at a certain level of service. But it, it will eventually approach that. But that, and that certainly doesn't mean that we should not be exploring uh, the traffic operations improvements such as roundabouts and realignments of intersections. So that's going to be important in creating these links that we've talked about here tonight, too. All of those are going to be important aspects to address. And it, it's not, it's not an eight acre parcel of land that's going to break the system.
No, but I'll, I'll weigh in and say that if someone told me tonight that the roundabout that I had shown sketched at the junction of Red River and Long Hollow was off the table and could never be built because let's say there was a, a, a right of way complication, it could never be done. And that CSX was never going to let us cross the railroad tracks. And so therefore the other one would not materialize. Then my vote would be no on this development because I would be, I would not be in favor of such dense development along an area that's already strained with no hope of getting it fixed. So my request for information from engineering, which I think would take thirty days, is a request to find out how probable it is that we can come up with a solution. And I don't think in this case that it's an unreasonable delay on the developer to ask for thirty days for engineering to get us some information, which is I unreasonably asked our engineer to get in like thirty seconds uh, tonight. So on that basis, I'll just see who goes along with me on this. I'm going to make a motion for deferral. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Love. Uh, any discussion on that motion?
Okay, can I, can I interrupt here? There is a motion on the floor with a condition that just hasn't been voted on.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Too much, just too much discussion has passed under the bridge. Uh, technically, Councilwoman Love, will you withdraw that second?
I withdraw it for now.
And I withdraw my motion for deferral. We have a motion on the floor which already needs to be discussed.
Uh, or voted on. Well, I, I, as the person who made the motion, I, well, I understand the concerns and sensitive to them. I, you know, I don't, I just don't see any reason not to, to, to take action on this, this evening. The, the issue does need to be dealt with, but I don't think it falls on this particular development. Or if, as long as they're, you know, as long as they're willing to give us the dedication for the right of way, which they've indicated they're willing to do. And that's what the, the motion includes that, you know, the city has the option to, to, to fix the problem.
As the second, I agree with Matt. Let's vote.
So we're about to take a vote. I, I will tell you that um, I think it's only fair to ask the applicant if he wishes to defer, because I think he can read the table that some people are not comfortable voting for this the way it is tonight without more information. Some people want to vote, so it's only fair to ask the applicant if they wish to defer. And if they don't, we'll hold a vote right now. So Chairman, uh, yeah, he puts me in a little bit of predicament. I don't have my client right here beside me to um, to tell me, obviously a thirty day deferral doesn't really affect me personally as much. I don't know um, how much it would affect him. I do feel confident in stating that I feel like we can work the necessary right of way into the uh, into the design for the roundabout as you had shown, or even a roundabout that's a little bit bigger. I don't think the one that you had shown is probably as big as it needs to be, but I think that uh, we could work that right of way in for the right si- uh, right size. And also considering that, you know, even though we ask, we are asking for more density, I think is, is Mr. McCord has stated, and he can correct me if I'm mishearing him, that even as R ten development or an R ten, a multi-family or attached development as a conditional use, you know, we're still having these same issues to deal with. Um, so for that reason, Chairman, I respectfully would I'm going to go with, I, I do not want to ask for a deferral on behalf of my client right now. Um, so I, I don't think I can right now, Chairman. I, I appreciate and respect that completely. Um, I think it's, unless there's other discussion, does anyone has any other discussion? It's uh, Alana? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so the density that I was speaking about from was from the, the, the living space of the actual development, not so much the traffic and the road stuff, but like when he was, when it was being presented as a project, you know, I'm more comfortable like with fifty units. And that's what Mr. McCord said, it was about forty eight units. So I was talking about the level of density on the actual property itself, um, not just also focus on the traffic. So that's what I was, the R ten. So that's what I was, the R ten, R six thing, that's what my uh, contribution was saying. If they can remain the R six, keep that density uh, level um, with the um, uh, what do we call it, the conditional use permit in there and, and working it that way. That's what my uh, contribution was earlier, not so much the traffic, but actually the living space of that area, just due to the, the surrounding areas.
And I think when you said keep the zoning, you mean keep the RT and not keep the R six.
Yes, yes, sir, sorry. You are correct, R ten.
Any other discussion?
I understand what you're saying now, Ms. Love. I, I do understand. However, I, I don't think that that was, I think my, our clients and my client's intention was to come and get more density than what the R ten allowed. And that's, and in, in choosing the R six was looking at some of the surrounding areas and seeing what was there. So um, I, I don't think if my client was here, he would say uh, that, okay, I'll back off to R ten with conditional use permit. I mean, that's the whole reason we've made this request to go to R six uh, was to not do the forty eight units.
Okay, because when I, when I was asking, it was a bit, why, why was it that? You didn't mention that part? So that's why I was just going off the uh, the connected units, that's what you mentioned?
Well, and that's what I thought, Mr. McCord corrected me, um, but is, is obviously also to um, to get the extra density was from the R ten to the R six. Uh, I did not think that the, in, in the art, the attached dwellings are a straight use zone in R six rather than a conditional use permit, which is an extra step with the BZA. But we didn't just ask for R six for the townhomes, it was the townhomes and the density. Uh, so I don't think he would back off to R ten uh, or want a deferral right now, tonight.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I just didn't, that's all I went off of, your initial comment. Thank you, Andy.
I'm sorry for, for being confusing.
Do we have any other, um, anybody else who wanted to add to the discussion? Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
I want to comment about the traffic. Uh, the traffic has been a problem for, for fifty years. I spent forty years on uh, Blah Street, and after two o'clock, you cannot go down Blah Street, expect to get on Red River Road, period. And now, uh, since three eighty six has been, been built, uh, you go the co-op any time of the day, and you cannot turn uh, left going into town any time of the day. You've got to turn right and go around that to, to get to the other side of the town. And it's been that way for a long time. And this, like, nothing will change until uh, the roads are built to handle the tra- traffic. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we've heard from everyone except Mr. Strathern. Did you have anything you wish to add, Albert?
Uh, I concur with Dr. Organe and uh, Mr. Wilson, and that I have a business in that area. And it's difficult to uh, try to uh, combat the traffic, you know. Uh, a lot of times I have to go down Church Street, you know, to be able to get out. So it, it's, it's an existing issue that has to be addressed at a later date. Uh, and uh, so we're just hopeful that in the future, the City Council and the state will get together and come up with a solution for it.
Okay. Well, I think we've heard from everyone. Thank you, Albert. Um, before we vote on the motion, I think it's appropriate. We've had a lot of conversation. Marian, would you mind looking back in the minutes and uh, restating um, the motion by Mr. Harris? Um, it's with, it's a motion for approval with staff's conditions plus one very well worded additional uh, condition.
Right, and I'm not sure I got every word, but um, the applicant providing the dedicated right of way for future um, uh, portion of the property, the southeast, east portion of the property, and this will still be considered open space.
Very well. If there's no other discussion, uh, all in favor of approval indicate by saying aye. Uh, Marian, please do so by roll call vote.
Chair Perrier.
No.
Vice Chair Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler.
No.
Okay, passes four, three.
That's what I got. Okay. All right. Um, thank you. That was a spirited discussion. Um, we'll move on to item number eighteen, um, which is Comfort Inn at Baker's Crossing, an architectural change. Um, which staff member's presenting this item?
Gillian Ogden, staff planner.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gillian.
Uh, yes, next slide, please. So this is the Comfort Inn that is currently under construction that's next to the Hilton Garden Inn. This will actually be across the street from the vintage uh, Baker's Crossing Apartments. Um, so they are asking for an architecture change. This is what is currently approved, is mostly an Ephesus building. Um, and if you go to the next slide, show the other side. Again, mostly Ephesus construction, next slide. And they are actually going to go to a predominantly brick facade. Um, so just the center white panel uh, will be Ephesus, and then the remainder of the building will be brick, next slide, please. For the other side, the configuration is pretty much the same, next slide. And then here is the color palette. So everything except for the, the panel that sticks out with comfort on it, everything else will be brick. So they're actually expanding their um, the, the brick and stone versus the previous version, which had mostly Ephesus. Um, so that we just wanted to, to get your views on this change, and if you would uh, approve this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
I do not see them on the call, um, but this was a pretty, this came up last week, so I should be able to answer most of your questions.
Okay. Well, with that, um, uh, there's no public comment involved with this particular item, so we'll open it up uh, to questions for staff um, or I'll entertain a motion.
Julie, can you go back to what was previously approved? So the, the one on the screen is what they're proposing to change to, correct?
Yes, yes, the one that's mostly, mostly uh, white and red. Um, this previous version, all the gray was Ephesus, the red was Ephesus. So they're actually expanding their brick footprint.
Do you know the reason?
Um, that they just came in with new architecturals.
Well, I like the brick.
So it pretty much meets code now, so staff didn't have any objections to the change.
I, I don't have any objections to the change, although I actually prefer the other architecture, but this is compliant, so I don't, I don't see a problem with it. That's a subjective opinion.
I like wood, looked like wood paneling that was in there. That was, that was nice to set it off.
Yeah. All right, I, you know, just in common architecture, I think it's, a- as our area grows and expands and as times change, I think we're going to see more of this, you know, modern eclectic architecture. You see it in a lot of other cities, as they, as they develop and mature, as opposed to the red brick buildings. There's, there's nothing wrong with the red brick hotels, especially where it sits, but um, I, I don't want to vote to change the architecture, because the other was unacceptable, because I think it was perfectly acceptable. But uh, there's nothing wrong with what they're proposing.
Any other discussion? Uh, then I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Strather to approve with.
Second.
And wait a second, by whom?
Me.
Mr. Wilson. I don't have that pulled up in front of me. Was that uh, I'm sorry, how many conditions of approval are there on that?
Oh, there's, there's not any.
Okay, I didn't see any.
No, there, there's not. This is just architecture.
Very straightforward, uh, motion to approve with a second. Um, any discussion? Seeing now, call for the vote. Uh, Marian, please take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Vice Chair Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Uh.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather.
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes seven, zero.
Thank you. Um, with, that's the last item, um, other than our item number nineteen, which is listed under other businesses, is to discuss, discuss proposed changes to the Planning Commission bylaws. Uh, Bill, will you be presenting that?
John, I can, I've put the slides together. Bill, as uh, you feel necessary, please chime in. Dustin, next slide. Just as a reminder of what our goals were with the Planning Commission bylaw changes, uh, the minor ones were to change the name and update that, the deadlines to reflect our cycle. Next slide, please, Dustin. Uh, there's some major goals and or changes, enumeration or restating of powers designated to the Planning Commission by TCA. We introduced the idea of an administrative removal of incomplete items and established special committees of the Planning Commission. Um, also added some language to give the chair more authority in public hearings to keep the meeting moving forward in an orderly fashion, if he or she should choose to. Next slide, please, Dustin. There's the ten page draft in your Planning Commission packet. Uh, we'll be continuing, continuing this discussion through the May Planning Commission meeting, where we hope to adopt these uh, amended bylaws, and we're happy to set up individual meetings with any of you, should you have questions about the contents or what the intent of what the language changes are. Next slide, Dustin. And uh, in our discussions with John this morning, one of the things we'll be able to answer for the next meeting is the mission of the Planning Commission is, and then in, on a one page sheet that'll go into training material, very simply, we will be able to break out what the mission of the Planning Commission is with links to appropriate TCA code for anyone that's interested in um, digging that far deep into it. So it'll be in a similar format to this uh, that's displayed on the screen, and uh, we'll have that ready for you next month. Councilwoman Love, you look like you've got a question brewing.
No, no, I don't.
Okay, so it, um, that is what our intent is for the bylaw changes. If you have any questions of this on it, uh, Bill or myself can answer and anything that you have, and we're still working with Latisha and Susan from the City Attorney's Office to make sure the language is as clear as possible in what our purpose and intent is.
Thank you, Josh. Um, we'll study it more and uh, and encourage everybody to, to email in their comments, particularly on that mission, so that we know where we can be laser focused in every meeting. Um, with that, do we have any um, other, other business or any announcements?
Uh, I just wanted to mention that uh, on Wednesday, we will be before the local government planning advisory committee, who will be considering the resolution y'all passed and the councils passed to um, reconstitute our Planning Commission. And we thoroughly believe that they will provide us with a approval of that, and that's the basis for, of course, the bylaws change. And, and some of our staff reports and so forth will reference different statutes, and we may look at it a, a little bit different approach. We're not going to necessarily disregard anything that's happening outside the current city boundaries. We want you to be aware of that, but um, uh, so there'll be some things that we can discuss related to that in addition to the minutes, I mean, to the bylaws, excuse me, at our work session in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and just one suggestion for staff is um, try removing the distributor cap from Dustin's vehicle, and maybe you can't leave.
During the meeting, I did flatten all four of his tires.
That'll work, too.
Yeah. All right, well. Anymore.
And I, I've got one thing to say, just since Rick wasn't on the call or the meetings we got started this evening, and just, Rick, uh, personally, thank you for your years of service on the Planning Commission. It's been a pleasure, and you should be proud when you drive around Gallatin to see the things you've had influence over the last twenty years, and we greatly appreciate your service, sir.
Amen to that.
Amen to that. Uh, I've had fun.
I will try to do.
And certainly miss you.
Try to protect the public. Y'all are going to miss me whether you like it or not. Well, I hope I'll see you at the restaurant for breakfast one morning.
You will, and I need some of your tomatoes, for sure, and maybe some of that sausage. All right. Well, thank you all. Y'all have a good evening, seven o'clock, seven after, go home to dinner. Thank you.